First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. If everybody's had a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the motion.
It's approved by Glenn.
Second in.
Seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise, the approval of claims. If you've had a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim.
Second in motion.
Seconded by Jose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. First item on the agenda is we are blessed to have Brian and Sarah here from Destination Honeyburg give an annual update.
I'll jump up here where I can see this everybody, so. We, we shared some paper copies of this in front of you, and we can share it electronically. I don't think I had enough quite for everybody, but. Brian De Kemper here, from representing the board of Destination Honeyburg. Thanks, everybody, for your time. We want to use this as our annual update and review, share a little bit about what's happening, and then formally make our request for funding for the 2024 calendar year. So, the sheets that you have in front of you, there are a couple of things. There's a copy of our presentation, and then we've also got some stat sheets from our impact report over the last year with Indiana Main Street and the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Just a quick review. We've had a couple of updates to the board over the last year, some people cycling off, some people cycling on. Myself, as the president, Devin Craig going through the officers here on the executive committee. She's our vice president. Arlo Donhauer as their secretary. Brad Pun is the treasurer, and Sarah that you know over here is our executive director. Other board members, Justin, who's joining us here as representative of the city, Lauren Tanner, Molly Preer, Jenna Gogol, and Helen Camacho. In addition to an advisory member, Whitney Lubers from Visit DuBois County, DuBois County Tourism, for those that may know Whitney. And our fabulous intern Max Rashi continues to support us as a youth ambassador and intern with our projects. The four-point approach, this is just a quick reminder. The Destination Honeyburg follows the Indiana Main Street format, which is a template of guidance for us, really, for how and what we do. So there's a four-point approach of organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. And really what that means is we're trying to make sure that we've got arts, music, cultural events, ways to boost the businesses downtown, and anything that we can do to have a positive economic impact here in the city of Honeyburg. So that's the refresher. And again, our footprint, it's really the downtown footprint, the corridor on Fourth Street going through on 231, and then we've got a dogleg carve-out for League Stadium as well. This is very informal. This is just a way for us to say, hey, we're a downtown Main Street organization, but of course, we support all businesses in Honeyburg. We wouldn't say, hey, because you're on the north side of town, we wouldn't support you as well. The activity through the years, again, we were established in 2013 officially as a nonprofit, going all the way through. Sarah joined us as an executive director, our first paid staff, in 2017. Moving through, again, over the last few years, we had, you know, some, some great things last year. We hosted a community exchange. We were able to help contribute to the city's purchase of the sound system, and then some mural work as well. This year, we're going to talk a little about some of the other grants and awards that, that Sarah's been able to help along with the rest of the volunteer board. Some programming coming up next year with the Solar Eclipse, for those that have heard about it, April the 8th. It's, it's a real thing, and it's actually got a lot of momentum behind it. We just received an award from the IU Center for Rural Engagement as well on that. And again, I won't spend a ton of time here, but Indiana Main Street really acts as a template for us. So they give us support in terms of executive air cover if we need strategy support, if we need to recruit board members, if we need to talk to a neighboring town or city or community about, you know, a facade project, if we, if we need to talk to somebody about fundraising. They do a fantastic job in terms of networking, grant and funding support, trying to help show us when money is on the table and we need to be going after it. And then again, a framework for how we can hold ourselves accountable for the kind of impact that we have here in Honeyburg as well. So, the real meat of the, the presentation here is just a review of what happened in 2023. There's a lot of stuff on here. What we found really is that, I think, I don't think we could jam any more into the calendar, which is one of the things that we wanted to talk about, at least share today. Everything from Sarah and Justin attending community exchange events in Rushville, Terre Haute, and Muncie, all the way through to our farmer's market, which goes through the summer and just ended, and our event calendar of Fourth Fridays, and the Haunted Honeyburg Blues Festival, which is this Saturday. Along with that, we added in a couple of the other achievements and highlights here. We received a, an award for a grant for $10,000 for a mural. So for those heading north on 231, you see the back of the Firefly Building, the gastro-owned building. You see that new mural that's on there. That was actually as a result of that $10,000 award from the IDDC. And then we have a couple of other things coming up here as we head into the winter months as well with our annual ice skating rink that we fund to complement Small Business Saturday for our retail partners as well. So, jam-packed calendar throughout the year. We're trying to balance this to make sure we can keep everything as free to the community as possible. That's actually our biggest challenge right now, trying to find out what we can do to expand this while keeping as many things as possible that are free to the residents of Honeyburg and surrounding communities as well. Any questions about our calendar of events or anything else that we, we might be working on here? Back in March, one of the, one of the dots on that timeline, we met with the folks for the Office of Community and Rural Engagement and our annual strategy review meeting and an evaluation. So they go through and they look at how we're performing across all these pillars, and they also have strategy recommendations. And the four or five big highlights that came out of that, we had, they did a survey of the city of Honeyburg residents. A lot of you may have seen it. I think we, we passed it on back then as well. But what are the things that are important to you? What would you like to see in the community? A lot of the survey data reflected, they're really worried about vacant storefronts, you know, vacant properties, retail businesses, and supporting small businesses. They want to see more opportunities for people like Destination Honeyburg to attract small businesses to Honeyburg. We also realized that we've got a really strong opportunity to work more closely with the Merchants Association. We're targeting a lot of the same volunteers. We're a small community, so we, we have a lot of the same people in both organizations, and that was one of the things that came out of that as well. And our existing staff are pretty much overutilized. For, for 20 hours a week, Sarah probably works a lot more than that, and we're excited to have her as a dedicated executive director in part-time capacity. And what we're finding is that in order to take the next leap to be eligible for other funding, we really need to add either a full-time equivalent or another staff member to, to take on some of those efforts as well. So that was the, the big outcome from March. And then the last, I would say, the last six months outside of our event calendar, the three big areas where we've, where we've been spending our time as a, as a board have been on the Solar Eclipse planning. As some of you may know, we've been talking with the, the city airport, and we were approved last night at the, the board meeting for the Honeyburg Airport to host an event on the day of the eclipse. So on Monday, April the 8th, right at 3:03, when you get your three minutes of actual eclipse work, we, the darkness that's going to happen, we're going to be out there hosting an event with music, food trucks, and some other programming, and then hopefully the Sunday before as well, as we build this out. We just received $2,500 from IU, the Center of Rural Engagement, to fund a little bit of that as well. And then the creation of a design theme. So something we wanted to share as well is that when you get a $10,000 grant for a mural, that's fantastic. You get somebody that says, hey, I'll let you do that on my building. You can paint on my building. That's also fantastic. But what are you going to put on there? And what we realized after a couple of these this year is that we need a comprehensive theme for the city of Honeyburg, so that when this money comes available, and we've got people that say, I'd love for you to put that on my building, that we've got a template. We've got an idea of what that should look like. So what we did was we worked with the folks at IU to put together a diverse group of community stakeholders to put together a workshop where we can actually build out, what do we want this to look like? What kind of design elements do we want to have in a mural? So the next time we get, hopefully, another award, that we, we're ready to go. And then when we go to a building owner, they know what it is that, you know, we're going to work with a local artist on to, to do something like that on their building. And then the latter half of the year as well, we've been working with the merchants organ, the Honeyburg Merchants Association on some strategy for 2024, where we can work together and potentially combine our organizations where we support more of the retail side of what they're doing, driving small business traffic to downtown, and they can have a bigger role in the world of what we do on the Destination Honeyburg Board as well. Okay, so, in terms of future initiatives, for the upcoming budget year, we've been working with Brad, our treasurer, the folks from the Merchants Association, and then also the board. We would like to formally request $30,000 from the city, if possible, to supplement the DH operating budget, which is 10,000 more than last year, just to be clear. The $10,000 that additional that we would be requesting for the 2024 calendar year would be used to focus on additional fundraising and grant writing support. So to be clear, staff funding, you know, to go after additional grants, support facade programs, retail workshops, and business support downtown. The, the resource would be also used to drive more foot traffic, developing more promotions for local businesses, event planning, marketing, advertising, and to help expand the work that the Merchants Association's done with their stroll and retail events that are now on a quarterly basis. So that could mean having an event that overlaps with what they're doing. We can add music or something else downtown when they want to host a shopping event. And then also coordinating a new series of seminars and small business events at Current Blend. We see this a lot in Jasper. It's something we've talked about doing here in Honeyburg, but haven't done a lot of, where we bring in somebody to talk about retail marketing, small business marketing. How do you grow and support your businesses and your storefronts? And so those are things that today, with the work that Sarah does already, you know, working well beyond the 20 hours a week that she's being paid for, we want to try to find a way to go beyond that, to get to effectively a full-time equivalent to handle those things where we can drive more resources towards small businesses, and then what the, the work that the Merchants Association is doing in a different way today. So I think that's, that's probably the, the big lead in here for, from our standpoint in terms of the, the funding that we, you know, obviously appreciate and, and have been lucky to get over the last few years from, from the city as well. So I'll pause there just to see if there's any questions about any of those things or the, the request itself.
So would you say in the possible future, you guys are joining as one group between the?
Yeah, we've been talking.
Are you now? Are you calling for it, or what's the, what's your?
Yeah, yeah. So I think both sides right now, we have everything but a signed resolution from both sides to say that this is the direction we're going. We've been talking with Andrea and representatives of the Merchants Association. We've been meeting for weeks, if not months, on our side, and we have everything we need. And we've been working with the Indiana Main Street and the Office for Community and Rural Engagement as well to find out, hey, how do other communities do this kind of stuff when they fold in the chamber? Do they fold in a Merchants Association?
I brought that question a few years ago, about if you guys recreate as a team, you've got more people on your force, right?
Yeah.
And hopefully, it could work out, you know, because that's what you guys basically are doing, working together for the sake of it.
Yeah.
I think it's great, you know.
Thank you, yeah.
You guys are doing a great job doing what you're doing.
We appreciate it. Yeah, that, that's exactly what our hope is. So depending on the outcome of, of really this meeting and any other guidance that you may have about the process, that would be our intention moving forward to formally work out that on both sides, where the Merchants Association would have a vote, we would have a vote as well. Yeah, because like you said, we're competing for the same, you know, volunteers, community funding and support, things like that. And it works out really for both of our advantages to combine forces.
I agree. I think that'd be a good idea. Do you have any questions, Ryan?
The request, the request this year is 30, and your, your previous year was 20, so we would tell them.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And your other source of funding is you have two fundraisers a year?
The other sources of funding are, we have an annual capital campaign where we reach out to area businesses and sponsors. So we've fluctuated between 20 and 40,000 coming in from that, depending on the year, over the last probably three or four years. And then we also have support from IU, from the Center for Rural Engagement as well outside of this. And that also is heavily depended on an annual basis, based on what they have left, what's the remaining in some of those grants that they have, the foundation grants and things like that. So those are, Sarah, anything else I'm missing in terms of big chunks? Those are the, the primary sources of our operating budget. And I would add that the other thing that we haven't done again, in terms of focus area, is to drive any other additional revenue from our events, and that's something that is going to change as well. We're going to keep the baseline of free-to-community, family-friendly events that we've had in the past, but try to find some new opportunities to actually have an annual fundraiser that might bring in 10, 20, 30,000, something like that. Those are things that we haven't done because we've been so focused on keeping things free. So it's hard to actually really do anything other than break even with events like that.
I think it is important that, and I like that you're, you're addressing it and focusing on it, but I think with public funds, it's technically being contributed from all of the taxpayers in Honeyburg, that the events do remain user-friendly. You know, it's something that anybody can come and participate in without them feeling like they're part of a fundraiser, because they've already kind of been part of the fundraiser at tax time, right?
Yeah.
And so I, I like that you're doing that. I think that's important. And I think it's important that the public be aware that, that money that is, is used by your organization or received by your organization is really for their benefit. And there's a lot of events and a lot of activities that are, that you guys put a lot of effort in to making possible that everybody in town can participate in. It's not just people that, that work on Fourth Street. It's the whole city.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to be clear, the two on the timetable here, you have two items that are listed as fundraisers, but they're not for, you have the casino night listed as fundraiser, and you have the farmer's table listed as fundraiser, but they're not in your operating budget? Is that for your events?
Yeah.
That money is separated to use for your, to, to make your events free, or?
Yeah, it's actually.
I'm not following.
Yeah, sorry about that. That's actually just a notation that we probably should have updated. So both of those are small and designated to be fundraisers as well. And so we just have them here flagged as they fall into our event calendar. But there, those are the only two today that don't fall into a free-to-the-community type of event. But, yeah, so those do contribute to.
Everything else on here, I assume, or, or I know by attending, there are, there are free events?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what is your, can you expand more on your process for determining a theme for your future murals?
Yeah.
What are you thinking there?
Yeah, well, we're about to find out. We, we have our next meeting or, or kickoff on Friday. So the process is bring in people, different ages, someone from school corporations, someone from nonprofit backgrounds, someone from a corporate background. We have about 10 different people lined up, and so they bring somebody from the Architecture and Design School at IU and says, hey, what are the tenants of the community? What's the, the history and culture of the county? How does that play in? And what are some key design elements? We don't exactly know what those will be yet. We'd be happy to share the results of that after the, the first meeting here that we have on Friday.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, yeah, that could be a great follow-up. Right now, we don't, there is not an output from that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something we're eagerly awaiting. We got a couple more of the design-focused, creative minds from the board.
I've been to Tell City not too long ago, and they have a mural down there of the old fire station and stuff. And that's, that stuff is kind of interesting.
Yeah.
From back then, you know, 1900s.
Yeah, if you have any, any other references for things that you see that you think are fitting of the city like that, let us know. We can share those things as well. Because the, the benefit of having an outsider come in is that they can talk about what other people are doing, but they don't necessarily know Honeyburg, which is why, you know, we've got eight or 10 people that hopefully have good historical context there, too.
Well, we got a lot of cameras, it looks like now, so you can see them back in both of these buildings, all these buildings. And I think you got a lot of opportunities.
Yeah. That's our hope.
Anything else, Ryan?
Nothing else from our side, yeah.
All right, we'll obviously take this into consideration, you know, between the budget situation.
Need to wait, we don't act on this.
We don't need to act on anything tonight, or?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure we can answer, ask any questions that you may have. So we appreciate the time, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Nice report.
Yeah, good job on that.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Next thing on the agenda actually is kind of a follow-up to from the Board of Public Works. We found out that as we were doing some redistricting or something out on Sunset Drive going on the east side of 231, that there didn't seem to be a fire hydrant on that side of the highway. For those people that were still. Protection board, but for us, in order to provide adequate fire protection, they need a fire hydrant out there. The only one that's close right now is on the other side of the highway, which is by the cemetery, which means that if we actually had to do something over in the apartments or something like this, we'd have to block off 231 when hoses or our tanker trucking link could probably explain it better than I can. So anyway, so the Board of Public Works recommended, let's go ahead and do it. But because it's a water department situation, which comes before the dis-council, not the Board of Public Works, we just need a permission from you all to proceed with that type of situation to do that. Fortunately, we do have a developer out there that's willing to pay at least half of what that would cost to do that, even though they really don't have to do that. They're willing to do that because obviously they have some property out there that they want to make sure it's fire-protecting. So they're willing to come up with the, with the, at least about half of it. The total thing, I think, is going to be somewhere a little less than $50,000 total by the time Jerry gave me all the figures. So if they're willing to come up with half of that, obviously, I don't, I think it's a win-win situation for everybody.
Yeah.
So.
It's got a commercial lot there on the corner, it's very helpful. You're going to have to have water supply for it.
Right.
Where would the power be located?
It would be at the far end of our property, the far end of the city, the city line. So it actually would help, actually help those people that need further out, because we still do fire protection for them even with that situation.
We're going to extend the main ice, so.
Yeah, we're going to go, we're actually going to go underneath the highway and run it down the, well, the field side, the north side, the north side of the property, yeah. But I just need permission from you all that we can go ahead and do that, since it does come through the water department. And so we're responsible for that.
Is this, is this our guys doing this work?
Yeah. Well, part of it, part of it's just the love for, for more end of the road, and that's all included in what they gave us yesterday.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is actually the consideration of the passage of the chicken ordinance. I know it's been tabled a few times and back and forth a few times.
Now we're all finally here.
Now we're all finally here.
This will be the actual second reading, right?
Yeah.
Or is it 2023 dash 20? Do we need to go over this again, of what it's about, or have we done that enough?
I think the agreement says something like, go and kick the can down the road a few times. Let's start it. So I think we've already actually had a motion. We introduced it already. We pushed it back. We pushed it back again. Now it actually comes down to the part where we actually want to vote for the ordinance. Is that correct?
It's correct. We're going to vote for passage.
For passage of the ordinance, or not passage of the ordinance.
So, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Jeff to approve.
I will second it.
Seconded by Tim. Roll call vote on this.
Guess what?
Nay.
Bounce.
Wait, what'd you say?
Nay.
Nay.
No.
Yep.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin?
Nay.
Duvan?
Aye.
Where?
On.
Three ayes, two nays.
You can. So as you know, when an ordinance passes, the council, it still has to be approved by the mayor in order for it to be adopted. There's passage, approval by the mayor, and then it's adopted. So, mayor can always veto an ordinance that's been passed. If he vetoes it, then it comes back to the council for another vote. And the veto could be overridden by a two-thirds majority vote at the next meeting.
Which, um, just to be clear, on a five-person council, that's four.
Four, four.
Has to vote for it.
Four in favor.
I'm, I'm just going to kind of tell you what I think about it, okay? Because obviously, I have the power to decide on a science situation. I'm just going to read, first of all, I certainly appreciate everything that's been done with this. I mean, we've done this for a couple of years now, it seems like. For all the information that was given out and looked into, I mean, you know, obviously, it's a situation that we didn't take lightly, obviously, because we really did the studies on it. You did all the work and things of this kind. I tried to keep them in open mind about, because obviously, I, first impression was not so, so favorable, but obviously, I did that. I, I, my own opinion, though, is I think that there's a time and place for everything. I'm just not sure that I'm in favor of this being the time and place for tickets, to be honest with you. I appreciate everybody that gave the response about it for, but I also are responsible for against it. So, and with that in mind, I, I just don't feel it's, it's in my best interest to sign off on the fact that we're going to approve that. I, I will approve it. So I will file a veto for this particular action. And if you move back to you guys, if you want to do that. I just don't feel it's in the best interest for every citizen that you have in the city to allow that. So that's my take on it. So you're going to know what's happening, something right in front of you. So, but that, we're done with that part of it then, right?
Yeah, they, they would come back to the council, the first meeting after the veto. If it backed veto, they assume that was a veto.
Yeah. Well, I'm just not in favor, don't I?
Yeah.
So, in, in the eight years that I've been on the council, this has never come up. So I feel I'm not sure what the next step is, but I'm assuming at the next meeting, we'll vote again.
You'll vote to override the veto?
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and if it ends up 3-2 like it is right now, the issue would.
The veto stands.
Veto stands and the issue's dead.
Right.
So then, assuming that happens, is there some limitation on when an issue like this could be discussed or voted on again?
No, no, it could be, it could be brought before the council at that very same meeting which attempt to override the veto. It can be brought up again at any meeting.
Yeah, typically.
But it's.
To reintroduce it.
There should probably be some changes that address the reasons, the reasons for the veto.
We just bring it up every, every meeting for the rest of our.
Yeah.
So typically then, what would happen is there would be further negotiations, let's say, to try to get the vote to four to one. But if it came up again, would it start the whole vote process all over again?
Well, if, if you don't override the veto at the very next meeting, then yes, it starts the whole process over again.
Introduce it.
In order for it to have to be introduced, first and second reading, and passed by at least a majority, and sent to the mayor for his approval or veto.
Okay. Okay.
So that's where we're at.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure I was clear with the future, my hope.
First time, Ryan.
First and only time I've ever done it, but I just don't feel that it's right, so. I can't, I can't sign off on something I don't think is right, so. Okay, Phil?
Nothing.
Tom has got the thing with the budget, so before we do that, can you open the hearings on that?
Budget hearing?
Budget hearing, okay.
The, the budget had been advertised as, as required. If you have any, anybody have any comments on, on it at all?
I have a question. I think I understand your tax rate, if I find it back here, detailing the budget. How is this rate compared to last year? From what I can tell, it was less. Is that correct?
Yes. Now, what, what I've got on there is I usually use an artificially low assessed value to create an artificially high rate, so that if there's something that goes wrong or there's an error, a county or a.
Uh, assessed value to create an artificially high rate, so that if there's something that goes wrong, or there's an error, county or something, we don't get punished for, we don't get, not get our full, uh, left.
Right.
We get our, we get, we, we get what we're due.
Yeah, so, if these are high, but they will, and I have in here that.
Expect.
It's likely to be, uh, about ninety-six, little under ninety-six cents, which is, uh, last year was a dollar, almost at the dollar six.
Yeah, dollar six. That's the way I read those, just want to make sure.
Yeah, our assessed value, uh.
Increased.
Increased, uh, two sixty, still over two hundred and sixty-five million now.
So in essence, we, we feel that this budget will have an impact of almost ten percent less than last year?
Well.
On the tax rate?
Each, each taxpayer will be paid a little less, right?
Will be paying about ten percent less than they did in twenty-three.
Well, you, you also have a, a four percent increase, but.
Clear as mud.
Rather, their assessed valuation may, may have gone up to.
Right.
May go up, and they'll pay that slower rate on a higher assessed valuation, so there's other factors that go into it.
If, if, if things were the same, I'd say yes, but.
The assessed value.
Things are never the, are never the same, so, uh. But if your assessed value was the same, then you would expect that.
Inte- yeah, but, but the assessed value of property has risen.
Yeah, yeah, and so everybody should be paying up.
A little bit more.
A little bit, well, you have new houses.
The rate may be a little less because assessed value's going up, but the amount you pay is now figured on a higher assessed valuation, so it, it, you know, it's hard to say whether it's gonna be a ten percent reduction or flat, or what, until the, the numbers actually come out.
Right, but in essence, though, we're trying our best to keep our, we're not adding, we're try, we're not adding to the burden.
It, it, it's much, it's much better if you can increase your assessed value then.
Then raise your rate, then raise your rate.
On each remaining taxpayer, I guess, right?
Yeah.
And our growth in the city has been a big contributor.
It is, more we grow, and, you know, go forward.
So what I, what I did was, uh, I did that estimate, uh, using the hundred and forty million, uh, the total taxes are eleven million, eight twenty-three, nine forty-two. If anybody had, then, anybody has any questions about that, I took your discussions we had on the twenty-sixth of August, I guess, and incorporated those in, I think it was adding a, adding a police officer, and an employee, then, and.
But then twenty-nine, that's twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, yeah, and then adding an extra twenty thousand into the park, I did.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have set the salary ordinance yet, so that can be still affected with the salary.
Right, and, and that's, well.
But we did put a number in there.
Well, we'll, uh, maybe talk about that in a second, but yeah, uh, we use five percent.
Got a question on one of these in the street department. Correct me if I'm wrong, last meeting we talked, uh, when we had talked about this, we talked about the sidewalks, you know, and we put twenty-five thousand dollars in last year for two thousand twenty-three for new sidewalks, and.
New sidewalks.
New sidewalk, period.
Right.
And next year, do, are we changing it to put the repair sidewalks to?
That's, that's what was proposed, yeah.
That's what was proposed, yes.
Okay, and I like to go against that, I would rather keep the twenty-five, another twenty-five for new, because it seems like that's the only time we get new sidewalks, when we specifically ask for them to do that, and hopefully, they can come up with money elsewhere to repair the sidewalks. So is that something that we get to vote on, if that's something we want to change?
Well, the, the budget is the mayor's, you, you can, you, you can decrease but not increase.
I think what he's asking is you change the white item.
You changed the word for repair sidewalks to.
I don't want, I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't make me any difference.
Actually, I was wondering how this works.
I think the intent was to have those funds available to repair sidewalks.
The intent was.
Either repair, repair or replace.
Last year's intent was to strictly new sidewalks.
Right, correct.
And that's what we've been using so far towards the end of this year, to try to get the new sidewalks, but not First Street, Chestnut, those kinds of things.
We've been.
But we did change it, I think we were talking about it in the budget, we talked about possibly using an increase of that, but the, the repair of sidewalks are actually in need of which, you're tearing them out and putting a new sidewalk in, but it's not really a new sidewalk.
Correct. And just a, just a side on that, we, in the ARPA money, we do have another.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand or so that is designated for new sidewalks.
Right.
So we've got newly created sidewalks? Not newly, we can't repair without, we have to create them.
Well, we, we could, but we have to change the terminology on the, eh, the ARPA money, right, that's what I said.
The ARPA plan provides for new sidewalks, not replacement or repair of the existing.
And I think they're, I think, I think we're very passionate about adding new sidewalks and, and creating that fund. I mean, we do need to repair sidewalks, that's not, no one's, no one's questioning that.
No.
But we, we're very, um, much wanting to have this and, and make that a part of this, this superintendent's workload.
So what would, what would be good, a twenty, I don't know, twenty-five?
Fifty, fifty split?
And, uh, the, the rest, uh.
Well, nobody explained the ARPA money was for, for new sidewalks, because we thought we'd be out zero, and if we don't appoint the, uh, appropriate money for that, it probably never got done. Since I just, I experienced it with my eight years, so that's why I'm asking, I just want to make sure there's money alive for new sidewalks, we continue on with that project somehow.
I mean, all, all that is, even if the money's appropriated, it's, it's still up to Steve to, to say, I'm, those sidewalks.
I think we'll, we'll counsel too, to say, we want these sidewalks.
No.
You, you just appropriate the funds.
Yeah.
For various classifications of use.
Okay.
Right.
Well, and, but that's what, that's what it was geared for, was for new sidewalks.
Right, right.
As far as I'm concerned, that's what it was used for, it's probably used for, continued to use for the rest of the year, but.
Okay.
Max in twenty days.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
After that, I don't know, but, but as far as the next year's budget's concerned, that would be up to the new mayor to decide as to for sure that's what he's gonna use it for, but in essence, it was put in there for, specifically for new sidewalks. And that's what the ARPA money was also put in there for, new sidewalks.
Okay, there, that's the twenty-three, now, in twenty-four, twenty, we haven't done, I mean, I guess we're still, how do you want to handle that, I guess?
Well, we haven't given the twenty-four ARPA money appropriation list back to anybody.
Right, but I mean, ju- just for these that, that are in the, I believe it's in the street department, right?
Right.
These, these numbers.
Yes.
That you're talking about, Tim?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, it was, it was our intention to, to fix gaps in our existing sidewalks, to connect them, to, to try to find a way to, to fix the problem where you see people jogging, walking their babies with strollers, you know, walking their two little kids on a, on a city street where there's not a sidewalk, between two beautiful, nice sidewalks, but there's two blocks, four blocks, where there's no sidewalks. And the goal of appropriating those funds for, specifically for new, was so that there would be a focus on fixing that problem. There's already money in the budget for repairing, and, you know, sawing and leveling and doing some of the things that we've done to our existing sidewalks, and I'm not discounting how important that is to keep them safe. But we want, we want the existing sidewalks connected to, to where we don't see people walking on Chestnut Street.
And that's what, that's what it was for, I mean, that's, that's what it was put in the budget for.
We've got a motion going, I want to keep it going.
Right, and, and that's what, that's what we're doing now, and obviously, if you look at the, we've got the commission now to start the rest of Chestnut Street, we've got First Street getting ready to be done, we've got the things for, and you know, there's, there's other things involved, for example, First Street, for example, that people complain because, put a sidewalk in, then you can't park the car there, things of this kind, so now we're putting an entrance to the back of the property so that.
Allow access.
Access to the back of the property.
And that eats, and that eats up your funds.
Well, but it eats up not so much that part, it's gonna eat up the street department's fund, because that's not sidewalk, we can put a driveway backside of it.
Yes.
But, but, you know, it's there for those particular purposes, and that's what we put in for, so that's what I've authorized it to use it for only, is for the new sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
The, the new mayor's gonna have his own way of doing those things, but, I mean, obviously, you know, he's taken consideration of what you put it in there for, and if it's listed as for new sidewalks, then that's what he's, shouldn't he do it?
He should.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Keep, keep.
We'll just keep, we'll just keep, we'll have to keep the passion, right, for this, and keep, and make our wishes, and then see what we can do.
Steve and Jason, I've met several times, just talking about that.
And, and, we, we want to stay on it, it's very, um, it is the directive of everybody sitting at this table, that that's what, that's what they want it for, so I'm making that clear to, to that superintendent, that that is, you know, it's always been discussed countless times, why we, we just dump it all into one fund, and we can do, it'd be easier, I said, I don't want it easier.
Right.
This, this council doesn't, isn't looking for easy, we're looking to solve some problems that are, are age-old, and we've had this problem forever, I want it, we want, we have blanks, First Street, I mean, if we check that off the list, that's gonna be a big win for me. Um, I've been staring at that for at least ten or twelve years, thinking, boy, I don't know why we just want to pour a sidewalk prior here, so.
Don't, right there in, in that line there, it says new sidewalks, forty-five thousand dollars.
Very good.
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
I changed it already, though.
Okay.
I'm not.
And I can change it back, it doesn't hurt.
No, it's fine, no.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm comfortable that, um, that we can, we can make our wishes known to, you know, whatever, whatever administration it's in.
I think so, I mean, once again, you know, that's.
That's, that's pretty incident.
We're, we're here to do what's right for the city, in that situation, I don't care who you are, where, what you're from, or wherever, uh, and so that's what it was there for, and that's what we just continue on doing the same thing, uh, I'm still planning on living in the city, so.
So we, I guess you would ask for comments.
Public comment out there?
Any, any public comment on the, you all discussed about the budget? During that, I'll close the hearing.
And then the regular, the schedule for the budget adoption is your next regular meeting, it will be considered for adoption, but.
Twenty-fourth of August.
I think you probably have to introduce it.
I would like to introduce it.
Or do I introduce it first, okay?
Shouldn't you have a budget ordinance in your?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
So can we introduce and still make changes?
Yep, you can amend it, uh, the next meeting, before the adoption.
And I'll make the motion to.
Motion made by Glenn to introduce.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, that would be, uh, let me check here now, but.
Twenty-four would be the approval of it?
Two hundred, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-one.
To inter, so you introduced it.
I would not be able to. We gotta be, I'll be airborne.
Okay. You could be off zoom anyway, you could be zoomy, but if I'm.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I, I'll call the hearing concluded, right?
Okay.
Now it's up to you for the rest of it.
Okay, uh, did you, I, I did include in your packet the, uh, salary ordinance, uh, template, really, for, uh, twenty twenty-four for the employees and for these, uh, elected officials. You, you'd see there, I think I put it in the currents, and then, uh, three, four, and five percents. Not, I'm really, I don't know if you want to act, but at least I, I just wanted to tell you what's there, and.
Probably talk about salaries, then.
Yeah.
I've been asked to, that we should try to address the on-call pay, it's not been addressed for several years, I've got the document. But, uh.
I think, right now, Tom might talk about that today, we're looking at about eighty dollars a week.
Yep.
For being on call, not counting holidays.
Eighty-five for a holiday, what holiday?
That's what I have here, that, uh, last time we addressed this was in two thousand fifteen, so maybe we do need to cut, divvy this up a little bit and update that.
Wouldn't that go, be able to go up with the percentage we pay the people?
Never changes. It's locked into a set rate of ten dollars a day.
That's a line item.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, could it be, could, could it be included to go up with whatever percentage automatically, so we don't have to.
If it's ten dollars, four, four percent each month, or forty cents.
I mean, four cents, well, but, but it's consistent, I mean, it's not gonna wait, you're not gonna wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven years.
Seven years, you're, you're.
I did some digging around, I did, after I got this brought to my attention, we're paying roughly eighty dollars a week for our guys being standby, and some of our local communities are a lot more than that. So, I don't know if we should, how much we should address this, but I think it does need to be addressed.
Yeah, I, I think we did check a couple other cities, too, and I, I reached out to Booneville and Washington, a couple of those places, I don't know, do something, I think, one of them was like, about one ten a week or something like that, I believe. Uh, Booneville, actually, never got back with me, so, that's surprising, Charlie forgot about it, uh, but I mean, even, something like that, I mean, you know, even if we went up a little bit that way, at least we're, we're doing something in the right direction. I don't know that we need to go, you know, they, they do it by the week instead of by the day, so.
Right.
What was the current time again?
Ten dollars a day?
It's ten dollars a day, fifteen for a holiday, like weekends, usually it's eighty dollars on a, on a.
And it's done, is it, is this done on seven-day week?
Yes.
If you're on call, you're on call the whole week.
Right.
Including the weekend.
Ten, ten dollar weekday, and increased to twelve dollar for.
That's not right, that's, that was, that was what, probably what it was back then, it's fifteen.
It is fifteen, okay.
There's three, there's three dollars right there.
Well, it's fifteen for weekends and holidays, ten dollars per day.
So, you, you'd have to go, like, Monday through Friday is ten dollars a day, so if somebody's on the call for a week, that, they get fifty dollars Monday through Friday, then Saturday and Sunday is fifteen a day, so there's your eighty.
Right.
So what would the, what would that breakdown have to be to make that competitive, you know, would, would it be fifteen and twenty? Like fifteen a day would make it seventy-five dollars Monday through Friday?
Forty.
And then another forty would make it a hundred and fifteen for the week, right? No, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred and fifteen for the week, um, so you'd be looking at fifteen a day Monday through Friday, then twenty a day on the weekends, and holidays.
I think it's okay.
That would be, yeah.
I think that'd be fair.
It'd be a hundred and fifteen, then, roughly. I think it's a step in the right direction.
That was definitely a step in the right, I, I would go with that.
So could we do this in two parts, like, bring it up to where we think it needs to be now, because we're eight years behind since we've made any changes? And then link this to whatever percentage increases we make in the future to salaries, just if, if it's five or three or whatever, just that automatically increases along with everything else?
Well, it's, it's nice to work with round numbers and such a thing, because they're.
Maybe because they only, maybe they only do half a week on standby.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of them only do, uh.
A few days.
Even, even if, for some instances, we just do four hours, because either they get sick or, or whatever, but, I mean, it.
Well, just make sure we're just beginning.
Divide that.
Yeah, they're just addressing flat fees, and next year, when the budget comes around, you know, if you want to take fifteen to sixteen, or fifteen to seventeen, whatever happens to be a flat fee, rather than tie it to the percentage, I don't know that that would be.
It won't be, no.
Yeah, you just, maybe just if you ask it.
We just need to put a, put a note in to address that, with budgets, but.
Yeah.
If, if we could swing it in the budget, I wouldn't mind moving that to fifteen dollars through the weekend, twenty for weekend holidays.
I have a second motion. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, eight, ten seconds.
So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen a day, twenty, weekday, holiday.
Right.
Weekend holiday.
Week, weekend holiday.
And we'll try to remember to address that.
You, Tim? Is that you?
Yes, second.
He's the second.
Second.
Second was one hundred percent charge, right?
And you were the first.
Kind of like me.
At the meeting?
It was a hundred percent when I got here.
So I can incorporate that in, into that, I don't know if you want it, do you want to deal with this?
Yeah, so you, you could, uh, consider what, uh, what increase, if any, three, you've got, uh, examples of three, four, and five percent, and, uh, you can, if you want to have an agreement on that, you could introduce this ordinance tonight with those numbers, including the standby pay that you just authorized.
The, the deadline is November first, and this meeting.
Yes, there's no hurry.
So there's no hurry. We're getting everything's early.
You got, you got another meeting.
We got another meeting, but we would need.
We're all here to that, we're all here tonight.
I know, we may not be all here next time.
And we gotta redo the ordinance or the, uh, salary. But, I mean.
The bud's gotta follow.
Right.
That, that won't make a lot of, I mean.
You're talking difference.
We're trying to save you, Tom.
Yeah.
Where's your comparison? Remember, we put the comparison per year. I saw it someplace, but I can't find it.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a tax of that, in the last two pages. That's, that's what you're painting here.
Are we, are we at the point of discussing three, four, or five percent? Is that why?
That's what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we introduce the budget at a certain percentage or not?
And what? So I do recall, last year was an, out of context, a year where we did like seven percent?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half percent.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a point of discussion. I would be in favor of, and everybody's gonna have their own opinion, I would be in favor of five percent. But one percent of that would be totally performance-based and it would have to be done by the superintendent. The automatic would be four percent and the last one percent would be.
Merit-based.
Merit-based. That's my opinion.
Didn't we try that in the past?
Huh?
We tried, we tried that in the past.
Yes, we tried it a lot of times, but I still think it needs to be that. I don't think that you should just carte blanche, go across the board and everybody gets the same. If you're all, if you got three guys that are operators and one guy is significantly better than the other three operators.
Yeah, kind of do that, any, can kind of do that anyway because what you're doing with this is raising the high end of the.
Yeah, but what we've always found is if, if it goes out to where we put it up in the high end, everybody thinks they've got that and then they get all bent out of shape.
Exactly.
That situation, you know, that type of thing.
Welcome to my world.
And the other problem is.
This topic today with somebody.
All the salaries are public. They go online, see what their coworkers are making and then they get, you know, and that's, that's the unfortunate part of it.
Where. My, my input on is you're trying to address the cost of living increase that people are experiencing too. No, uh, the, everything that people are buying is going, going up. Last month, it was three-point-seven percent higher than it was, August of twenty-twenty-three versus twenty-two. And so if we don't give people a cost of living adjustment, whether it's performance-based or not, they're falling behind. If inflation is running at, let's say, four percent for the year and we don't give them four, they're falling behind. And so I'm, I've lived my whole career on performance-based pay. A hundred percent of it is whether I perform or not, you know? So I'm totally for that idea. I just think that it's hard, it's hard for a supervisor to give it to one and not to another, when, when there's maybe more way, other ways that their performance can be, um, rewarded or lack of performance can be addressed in some way. I, I'm not against that at all. I'm just.
No, I was always for that.
This is, this is a discussion.
Yeah, right. So I, I lean more towards this decision being about keeping them up with, so their, their salary this year isn't less than what it was last year when they go to the grocery store and try to buy groceries, you know? That's, that's.
But to, to segue into what you're saying though, is if we only give them a cost of living increase, they don't really get an increase. Their buying power stays level.
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask you this. What if we say we'll max out four and we're left to superintendents give anywhere between one and four?
Well, that's going to.
That's going the opposite direction.
You're saying, well, I'm just saying, if we get, if we max out, say, you give all your employees four percent, you know, but, like he says, if, if a guy ain't working, you don't have to give him four percent, give three percent or two. But we're not arguing.
I don't, I don't think that.
I don't.
You're gonna put that pressure on a superintendent. He's not.
Some superintendents can't handle that.
Exactly.
We.
Well, and then don't, didn't we come out about the same time? We talked about that, where they could jump up and get more ratings to get in a higher degree scale?
If there's, if there's, if there's classifications available, some of them are at the top of the line.
Well, I don't know the top of the line because nobody leaves the city.
That's right.
I mean, we're, we're a good employer and people have long tenures here and they're usually at the top of their.
Their max out.
They're top of their, whatever, of the levels that we put into place.
I guess it was back, if, if the employee's not doing what they're supposed to do a hundred percent of the time, then it's a disciplinary situation rather than a paid situation.
It could be.
I mean, I mean, not always, but it's, but that's kind of, that's kind of how.
That is.
But I've done it both ways.
That is more over the years. It, it just,
and it, it sometimes it's, it's, it's easy to say, oh, well, I'm not gonna give you a raise, but are you gonna prove what you're, how are you gonna get up to where you need to be? That type of thing. I don't know.
So what, what you're, when you talk about three, four, or five percent increase, as somebody mentioned, you are talking about increasing the, the maximum amount.
We're increasing the, the top.
The top, the top, the top, the top of the range. And your salary yard, it says, where a range, where wage rates or salaries are here and above provided for with a minimum and a maximum wage or range, it shall be discretionary with the mayor insofar as said range is pertaining to each employee. And to pay such employees any salary or wage rate within said range based upon experience and job performance evaluations. So the mayor makes those decisions based upon superintendent's recommendations generally. And so what you're doing is setting a range and it's, it's up to the mayor based upon, uh, evaluations by the superintendent to fit those employees within that range. Some employees may not get a four percent increase if, if that's what you approve of a max. They may only get a one percent. They may get no raise. As long as they go within that range.
That satisfies my criteria then. If we're doing that or we have the ability to do that, then it satisfies my, uh, I just don't like to automatically level the playing field without having ranges. If we have the ranges, we have the, the, uh,
Discretion by the mayor.
Discretion by, by the mayor and the superintendents that already do that, then we'll talk about, I'm fine to talk only about the percentage and stick with it. Okay? And leave them to their day, leave the mayor and superintendents to the day-to-day task of administering this because that's what they should be doing. What we shouldn't be doing.
I, I would say if we're gonna go that way, I would say do it with a five percent. Give that as the top, top tier.
Top, top tier.
Top-tier range. Then let superintendent come to me or whoever that might be at that point and say, okay, this is what this guy's doing. I think he's entitled to that. Why? You know, through the hoax scenario of whatever it is.
Outside of performance-based pay increases, what means does a super, what means does a superintendent have for addressing poor performance? Or what you would consider the reasons why he wouldn't get the maximum pay raise? What, what other means would you be able to use?
Well, I, I, I think, once again, it goes back to doing the job that they're hired to do. I mean, if they're not, if they're not capable of doing certain things that they should be capable of doing, for example, and say, okay, yeah, I'm qualified to do this. Well, workers around said, this guy can't do that. You know, this is not working. So then at that point, superintendent said, we got, we got a problem there. We need to sit down. Promise we can do this and you're not getting your rate and you're not doing this, you're not doing this. So here's what you need to do. If you wanna get this, then you gotta do this.
I'm saying outside of pay being part of that discussion, what means do we have from one extreme firing somebody, from the other extreme, um,
It's just write-ups.
Or they can be reclassified to a lower.
Coaching grade or, or even transferred to a different department if that's so to speak, if they're not capable of doing certain things in one department, but they might be better someplace else.
Do you move them down in the range scale if their attendance or performance or whatever fall below standard expected, you know?
And that has been done.
I mean, yeah, I mean, sometimes people just, whatever, they, they don't, they, their performance doesn't go where they need to be redirected. I don't know often they do it.
If it's, if it's disciplinary, if there's a valid supportive disciplinary reason for doing it, yeah.
That'd be written up.
Yeah. That's good documented.
You have to go through, you have to go through the series of coaching and counseling and disciplinary.
That's not necessarily true though with the police department. There's other procedures for police department to be suspended with or without pay and, and, but, but for rank-and-file employee of the city, yeah, for disciplinary reasons, they can be suspended without pay. But it has to be documented and there has to be evidence and he has to be given an opportunity to address with the superintendent, um, his side of the story.
Just curious, but how do the superintendents feel about, about how to handle, um, performance-based evaluations and pay increases based on that?
Some, some are really good about that. And some are like, well, I'm, I'm short-staffed and, you know, I don't wanna lose somebody and I'm not gonna tick him off. You know, that type of thing is otherwise we don't get something done. And it's unfortunate, but that's kind of the way we're in as far as the scenario we're in with workers and things like this. It's just, it's, it's in the general public, it's the same way.
Yeah.
You know, when people are short-staffed and things of this kind sometimes. But, but I think if it's, if it's put to them that that's, you know, that's the way we're gonna do it, then they even have to do it. They don't do it and they wouldn't figure out what we need to do at that point.
Tom, we gave options for three percent, four percent that one year. How many superintendents gave all the people?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
I thought it was almost all of them. I think we, we talked.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I only remember one superintendent telling me that, that they were gonna give them whatever that raise was and then they changed, they changed their mind after the fact because they cost all kinds of.
Pay off.
Save us. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think you've gotta pay your employees what's appropriate and if they're not performing, you let them go. Unfortunately, you know, the labor force, the availability of labor is, is very tough. It's very competitive out there. So sometimes you can't do that and replace the individual, but, um, you pay your fair wage and you expect a fair day to work and if they don't do it, you terminate them.
Tom gave me numbers while back. In two thousand twenty, we gave two-point-five percent pay raises to the city. In twenty-one, we gave one-point-five percent. Uh, in twenty-two, we gave four percent. In twenty-three, we gave seven and a half percent. That's fifteen and a half percent over those four years. So if we do another five, so we're looking at twenty and a half percent in five years, so. Oh, four, that's not even.
That's not bad at all in five years.
Well, yes, it's good. It is, but it's also, it's also just keeping people up with what other things are costing.
And keeping good people is what it comes down to.
Yeah. So, well, I'm, so I agree with Phil. I think part of me agrees with Steve. I, I think we, we oughta, we oughta give something to everybody. Because everybody's cost of living has gone up this year, period. I'm, I'm o, I'm okay with making a portion of it, um, performance-based. But if it's one percent, I don't know that it makes a big enough difference to, um, to the employee to put the super through it. Having to make that decision over one percent, you know? It's, it's not, it's not enough money to pull any weight. I mean, if I was screwing off and it cost me one percent, I'd probably rather screw off, you know? If I'm that, if I had that, that thought or that mentality.
Well, and that goes back to what Phil said too, the fact that the superintendents have gotten to know the fact that he has not been in his job. There's other people out there looking for work sometimes. So we, we need to do it from that standpoint, even though, you know, you don't wanna have to retrain somebody over and over and over and over again sometimes. But yeah, sometimes you gotta make the hard decision as to what's, what's right. Is it right for these people to bust their ass on the speaks, excuse the expression, and get the same raise as somebody that's just doing his job, kind of going through the motions, but doing, he's, he's working, but he's not necessarily going above and beyond. Things of that kind, so. But like I said, every, every year so far that I've been here, the supers all come to me and say, okay, here, what we're gonna do. I said, well, why? You know, this, he deserves it. Well, okay, that's all I can go by, you know? I, I can't go by something, the fact, or somebody else can't go by the fact that, well, I'm not there every day. I don't know whether he's doing his job or he's not doing his job, you know? But, uh, it, it's tough. I mean, it's tough for these guys that work with these guys every day. Steve knows about that. Probably it's tough to, to say you're, you're not doing your job and you're only gonna get this, but you know, because you didn't do this, well, I was doing the same thing I was told to do, you know, those kinds of things. And we hear it all the time.
You got favoritism, I guess. You start blaming it there.
It's, it's very difficult and they don't, unfortunately, we're, we're, the city's really a, a very small business and, and everybody knows everybody and it's not.
Well, everybody knows when they get paid.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's very, it's very much a large corporation type thing where they can just go by, by seg, segment or whatever the segments get, two and a half. Those two thousand people are getting it. That's it, you know, but.
Well, then you talk about, well, how come they make, that department makes more than this department? Vice versa, all this kind of thing. So you get, you get it all, so you know.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem. I think what we're, I don't have any problem with the, with the additional one percent. Uh, if we're gonna, I think we should concentrate on whether, what, what actual percentage we're going to lean toward and have that discussion. And let them, let them do the day-to-day administrating of, of the employees and if that isn't, if they're not administering their employees, then the mayor needs to be working with that supervisor. I mean, that's the job. So there is a, we do have a process here.
Right.
So, um, I'm leaning toward five percent. Anybody, I mean, I'm only one of the five votes here. I'm leaning that way based on what you've talked about, the, the CPI. And I also would like to give them a little something more than keeping up. And we may not be able to do that next year. We don't know. Events change every week.
True.
Next year's election year, who knows?
Well, and we're, we're making a decision right now in October of twenty-three for their pay in twenty-four. We have no idea what the inflation rate's actually gonna be, so we're, we, we really are kind of basing, in my mind, basing this decision on what we know of this year and we're, we're only.
Stored debt.
Nine months through this year, yeah? So, I mean, we start, we started the year with inflation in January, six-point-four percent over the previous January. Fell to six, then five in March, four-point-nine in April. So it was higher than five for a while. But now it's, the trend is lower, except that in August, it was one point three-point-two to three-point-seventh from July to August. So it feels like it's trending a little higher, except that I just know the Fed has said, we're gonna keep interest rates high until we squash this and we're gonna get it back to the normal range of about two percent. There's some arguments that they'll never succeed at that without throwing us into a, a recession. But, um, but it seems to be working. You know, it's fallen considerably so far this year and, but it is a tough decision in October of twenty-three to have an idea what they're gonna experience even through the rest of this year and then going into next year. So within the budget, I'm, I, I think we all want to acknowledge our valued employees across the city and every one of us do. And I'd be okay with the five percent number to start with too.
Because of all that said, I agree with you also.
So we got, look at it, five percent to start with? So what we wanna put as, as a motion?
Glenn? That, that one. Okay, I mean, there's a, there's a, uh, an ordinance there. If we want, it's two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two. If you wanna say, we'll put in five percent.
Five percent in the temp light and, and also the, uh, out, call, call-out pay, fifteen dollars a day.
Right.
Day, twenty dollars all day and weekends.
Okay, so to clarify, just make sure we're not, everybody's on the same page. If we're gonna go with five percent, let's make sure we're all, all talking about the same thing when it comes to performance. Are we?
So five percent is just the range?
It's the top, the top range.
We're raising the range five percent.
Some of the, some of the pay scales are not all, you know, there's certain categories we're saying.
Well, there's, there's meetings, which I wouldn't think we'd change.
No, we're talking.
We're talking about hourly, hourly.
Hourly employees, we're talking about a five percent at the top of the scale.
Yeah, and that depends on where they fall on the scale.
And the mayor, working with the superintendents, has the authority to put an employee anywhere within that range.
Just like a new employee, you may, you may not put them at the lower part because they might have more qualifications than somebody else that you're hiring. So you put them in a medium area.
So using the terminology we've been using this evening, it's a hundred percent performance-based. So it could be zero or it could be five.
Right. That's kind of what this would mean.
Is that what everybody's, is that what everybody's?
Amen?
Amen.
So basically, just about, I will meet with the superintendents and make sure they're in the same understanding. So basically, just about, I will meet with the superintendents and make sure they're in the same understanding of the fact that, you know, that this is not cut and stone, basically. This is, okay, this is the range. You're going to have to come to me or to whoever at that point and say, okay, this person is entitled to this, this, and this because of this, this, and this.
So mayor, just to kind of curious, do you, you have a meeting with the superintendent where every single employee under their supervision is discussed?
I, I do, when it comes to the, for the wages, yes. We, we have superintendents meeting monthly. But as far as that part thing, that usually we sit down with them, talk to them about all their employees, about the entitlement or whatever. But over the last couple of years, it hasn't been really necessary because obviously, everybody, soon they got the same pay, the same percentage, right? So, you know, but yeah, but normally that's how it would work, yes. You go through every employee.
When do you do that meeting, like between now and the end of the year?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be decided just by January one?
No.
Well, we got to.
Well, we, we've got, we've got.
I have to get, I have to get other things done.
We've got to do that, we've got to do, the top of the, the thing with the five percent's got to be done before that. But as far as me sitting down with the actual superintendents about that, that has to be done before they start getting their pay scale. Which starts in December sometime, I think, because the last week of pay goes into December, if I remember correctly. It goes into January.
It's paid, paid in January.
Paid in January.
So do we need a motion to?
A motion to introduce.
We would just introduce, suspend it.
Introduce the ordinance, writing for our top range of five percent together with call-out pay of fifteen dollars a weekday, twenty dollars a weekend, and holidays.
Can we put, can we put on that before we make that motion, the fact that that is strictly the top of scale has nothing to do with automatic pay raises?
That's the way, that's the way the ordinance reads it.
Already, already said.
Well, but it says that, but people don't understand that.
I can underline it, I, I can underline it.
There you go.
I'm making a motion to introduce.
Motion made, introduced by Steve.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Motion made by Steve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then we're, we want to suspend.
We're to suspend the rules, you can.
Do you think we should table this? Motion to suspend.
Motion made by Steve to suspend. Seconded by Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt, are we going to adopt next week?
No, adopt, the motion.
Nope, you're going to suspend it, you might as well as adopt it. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Steve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One last thing on that topic, probably Tom, you're the one that's going to be the victim here. But we're switching the method of administering a pay raise slightly, well, considerably from what we've done the last few years. Is there a way that we can see after these meetings are held and decisions are made, how much of a five percent allowable increase was actually utilized? I don't necessarily think it needs to be per employee. I don't need to know what each employee got, but of the five percent, how much was actually granted or given to their employees?
They don't know that till the end of next year, because it's a global target, you've got all your pay. They can give an increase at a time of the year for performance, it's up there. So even though January one, and they get two percent, that means they can't get to the five percent or the four percent or whatever.
Yeah, because I, I usually have somebody come to my office at least a couple of times a month saying, this guy needs a raise, or this guy needs a raise, or this guy needs a raise, whatever happens to be. In fact, I have two upcoming today. I said, well, we're talking wages, let's kind of wait until we get done with this first.
You're saying the superintendent comes to you?
Well, or somebody has a reclassification, or he's done something different.
They can move somebody up in the class.
Move somebody up in class, or something of this kind. So we have a lot of those things that happen all year long, so.
So a person could technically get more than five, because they get five percent, there's five percent more room at the top.
Well, they, it all depends on their classification change, they could do from that standpoint. But their, the classification itself is not going to get more than five percent, whatever the top of that classification is. So they, they might be able to get ten or fifteen percent if they, if the classifications change, yes.
Or if they're in the.
But that's not a percentage based upon their merit, that's based upon what they classified as, of course.
But they could be in the middle of a range, and they could be, they could move up to the top of the range. Baseball performance, the superintendent may feel that is.
And that's what, and that's what, that's what it does during the year. I mean, they don't change the rate during the year.
Certifications too, get some more money for certain certifications.
You pass your class, or you, you finish your internship, or X, Y, Z, that can qualify you for.
Go from class one to class two, class two to class three, class one to class three. I mean, that's operators permits for this, operators permits for that type of thing. Fortunately, it's, it's a little bit easier right now because a lot of our people are already at the top of the, of the line, top of the class. So I suspect they've got their licenses, they've got their operators permits and things of this kind. So we're, we're pretty fortunate that we've got people that have been here for a long time that have moved up. So it makes it a bit easier, but you know, you could have a lot of different variations during the year, yeah.
I, I kind of erred, I guess, when I said we just hourly, and salary.
Salary would be the same thing, superintendents or those will be on salary, yeah.
Yeah.
Still going to get the same top of the range.
I think you did, you did a rule call.
I did, yeah, we needed to do a rule call here. Kissling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Dubon.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bye-byes, no names.
So that's.
What do you also have in front of you? Officials as well.
This is always a fun discussion.
I don't feel very official.
As I've expressed in years past, I think that to, if, if we're basing this on inflation and cost of living and all that, and we're expecting in the future, maybe ten years down the road, or twenty years down the road, to attract good people to want to run for mayor, or council, or any other elected position in, in the city, we need to keep them up and not allow them by our votes, not allow them to fall behind in, in, in pace, in pay. And so, as I've said in, in years past, I think we should, if we're going to be five, we should do five across the board for elected officials also.
At least on merit.
We're going to leave it to the mayor.
As far as I'm concerned, I think you cut the mayor's salary in half next year. No, just kidding, guys.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to, I don't know how to go against that argument. Uh, we're talking about, we're talking about basically three, three entities that are elected. You have the mayor, and clerk treasurer, and you have the council. I mean, that's it. That's all we're talking about. And I don't feel that, I don't feel that we should burden the elected officials with, with, or, you know, provide them less of an incentive than we are for this, for the hourly and, and salaries workers that, that work in the utility departments and on the regular shift. I think it ought to be across-the-board exchanged. So we've discussed different times in the past about taking ours differently, but I, the council salary's pretty easy. I mean, as far as the mayor and the.
Our council salary is peanuts compared to anybody else's, so it's not going to affect the council salary very much, but.
Right, five percent is not, not much.
You're not talking that much money.
But I do want to provide for the new mayor and the clerk treasurer that's coming in next year. And then I think we should.
I agree on that part. I've always argued on that part, you know? My question is like, why are we here? Are you here for the pay, or you keep raising the pay for making more insi- incentive for people to join up because it pays good? Is, is that the question? I always, you know, I thought we'd get plenty for what we do. You know, and I, I went, you know, I would always argue, we're, we're here, we should be here to make the best for the city. If this is an inconvenience for you, come here, I mean, you shouldn't be here. But I do understand what Jeff comes through, and Mayor Stan brought that up a long time ago. But I'm thinking, if we're here doing this for what we're doing, we're making, are we not doing enough? Because you want to pay more to get more different people to come to places?
I don't, I don't think, let's get a five percent raise, no matter what, you know, the council or not, if you're doing it for the fact of what it could do for the city.
Nobody, nobody sits in this chair for five percent.
No.
You know, there's a lot of.
Right.
It's a lot easier to sit on that side of the camera.
You know, I, I look at all the other people on the other boards too, is what they make compared to what we do. You know, I would always want to bump them up if I could.
You give them a little free.
We did last year, we gave twenty-five dollars more, and that's, and that's great, because they do, they do a lot of good work too, for the city.
They do.
Well, and I, I think people got to realize, in my opinion, we're not just two months a meeting, or two meetings a month. We're actually working twenty percent of this job.
I ain't going to argue that.
I've seen how much you work at this, Tim.
Yeah.
I know you.
I can see people make us a full-time job, you know, as, as, somehow, you know, because there's a lot of stuff that could be done. And there's always things to be done, I think. We do the best we can, when we can.
So what's your, so what's your motion?
To, to be five percent.
Your motion, five, I'm, I'm down to four or three, you know, so.
To be five percent, and then we just introduce.
But I, I'm just one vote, you know what I'm saying?
So is there any motion on the table yet?
Yeah, I, I guess that's what I have there.
I'm, I'm motion to introduce at five percent for the salary, is this twenty, twenty-four?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, four twenty-four.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, no. This is twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three.
Three, three, four, twenty-four. There's a motion on the table for an increase in the five percent.
Interesting, and a five percent.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Could suspend.
We didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have.
You, you can, you can suspend the rules, but it won't take unanimous approval, those present.
Oh, yeah, okay.
To consider on the same night as that.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I wouldn't lose it anyway.
Now we can go ahead and.
They can go ahead and.
Fasten.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Steve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five percent it is.
For, for.
Kissling, uh, Bounce.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Dubon.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bye-byes, no names.
Anything else, Tom?
I do have one question for Tom.
No. Question for me?
Yeah. On the council budget, the insurance you got down here, is this health insurance, or is that just other insurances?
Uh, if it says insurance, it's going to be the, uh, general liability insurance.
Okay.
We have a port, we have a portion of that and several other things, don't we? We have, we have a lot of things in our budget, for the city office and.
Yeah, because I think about, well, for the inch, health insurance, for council, I mean, is it budgeted for how many people?
That would be in there, but also your, your portion of the others that are in there, everybody down the hallway. It's a piece, it's, it has a piece in.
Okay, okay.
Not me, but, but, but maybe the, the senators.
The administrators.
That's all included.
Portion, account.
The, the west side of the aisle, the west side of the aisle.
West side of the aisle, yeah.
Council's, uh, insurance, health insurance is paid by the council, it's not paid, I mean, we have, we have to pay out the city. If you're not considering.
Yeah, but, but the city pays the rest of that, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, you don't pay a hundred percent, no.
Yeah.
You pay whatever.
Right.
Okay, because I was looking to say, is it, is it max? Is it maxed out enough for enough people to be on it versus what we budgeted for? It could be more.
Before Stephanie left, she went through and did, did the allocations and everything, and I, and we looked at it, and it looks.
Yeah, because after the next election, it could be more people on it, upon that. Good, okay.
That, that wasn't, that's not budgeted for, but, yeah, that could happen. We just have, maybe it's got to be kind of immodible, that they make changes, it's just an estimate, really.
Gotcha.
It can change at, at any, at any juncture of the year. Boys leave, boys get at it, so.
Health insurance is kind of a odd, not odd, but taken care of. What we see on the budget is what we pay into our, our reserves that we've done and associated.
For sure, so.
Yeah, and so, it could accumulate there, it's as easy as it could accumulate in the making, Captain R.
Right.
And what are our accounts?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Anything else, Tom?
Uh, no.
Any other items from the council? Any other items from the citizens? Tom Hundberg is coming up Saturday. Does everybody knows? Everybody knows Tom, it's on the sign, it's, it's on the south side sign coming to town.
Yep, I hope it is. And your progress on your north side signs coming along nicely?
Yes, yes. There, it's, it's, uh, they, we've got, everything's been signed off for the, the LED part, as well as the masonry part has been signed and sent off to those guys, so as soon as they get everything ready to go, they'll be starting on that.
The parking lot was striped today, I think there's twenty-three parking, parking spots.
It'd be twenty-four, probably twenty-three plus a small one, I think. Like, I was trying to figure out how much they were, but I.
I think we had seventy-two to begin with, and we had a number of twenty-three more.
Well, we had sixty-something out here, and one, one was over here.
Yeah, and.
And then thirteen on the other side, and then twenty-four on this side. I wasn't sure. Because I, I was thinking they run, they took out because of heads.
I haven't seen it either.
We got, we got, we got parked.
I go back this morning once, Tom.
Where was it? I just wanted to.
Uh, north side, where they cleaned out the brush along the fence road.
Yeah.
Are we responsible then, a few struggling trees there, are we going to take them out or?
Yep. We're going to take them all the way. Eventually, the, the plot, the plan is to take them all the way up where our old sign used to be.
Clean that whole mess up.
Clean that hole, they have coming down the highway there, so it's a beautiful, busy thing. We're going to mow the grass along the road and all that kind of stuff, just like you did before.
We just should own, we just need to own it.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as.
State highway, but we got to take.
Own, own the maintenance, we, you know.
Yeah, we, we, uh, that's one of the things we decided, well, it was decided that when we put the sign there, that we would clear that out, so you'd have very, very good visibility coming down the hill.
In the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
So finally, is anything else?
Turn.
Yeah, citizen items.
You did that.
You did that. Oh, the only other, the only other thing is the fact that I'll, I'll bring it up, we'd have to make a decision tonight, but give something thought. Scott Stein has bought the property around the hospital. The hospital's in, is, is in limbo again, because Deacon's is trying to, to jack him around for the price again. So I'm not sure what's going on with that, but he did buy the property around the hospital. He's would like to exchange a little bit of piece of his property he purchased for the corner that's next to our senior center that we would want to have anyway, because we could put the pond back in there to use it for retention, keep water from going over the Hunter's Crossing. And it's basically a matter of about a four tenths of an acre on the south side of the property we own now, that we bought for the senior center, versus a one point three something acres on that corner lot there, that he would like to exchange one for the other.
And the reason for that, it gives him more development.
He could, he could do something on Lea, he can actually put something on the. Yeah.
Is all of it, will all of this be north of the driveway?
It would be, no, it'd be south of the driveway.
North of his property?
His property, the south of the driveway.
I'm talking about on the backside between the.
It's a little square next to the dental office.
Yeah, in fact.
He wants that.
He wants that.
Yeah, he, he owns, he owns one part of that, but we own part of that also, but property.
We're going to give him the square by the dental office and then.
And then he, we're going to get the.
The square close to the road.
For the road, we'll get.
And then he's going to own, he'll own everything north of, then he'll own everything north of the driveway after that?
Yes, yes.
What he owns next to the dental office isn't large enough to develop, it's just a strip.
Yes.
Little strip, so he needs more in order to, for there to be a buildable, commercial lot of some kind.
Right.
Or whatever.
But then he owns all the way on the north side of the driveway, yes, he owns that, and then around to the east from, up above, past the loss.
Do we get back into appraisals being needed?
Well, if, if, if it's determined that the values of those properties are, uh, less than twenty-five thousand dollars, then you can negotiate, uh, on the open market and approve it by a resolution. But if you believe it's more, more than twenty-five thousand, then, then yeah, we have to have appraisals. To do the exchange.
Well, first of all, the, the corner lot basically is not buildable, obviously, because of the old pond, it used to be there, and obviously, but it would serve our purpose as far as putting the pond back in there, to use it for retention from that ditch that runs through there, and then it goes into Hunter's Crossing, and floods and all that stuff. So that would be a positive thing for us, uh, what we would lose on the south side of that property, we weren't gonna do anything with anyway. Uh, so whether or not it's worth twenty-five thousand, we're, we're talking about not even a quarter of an acre, is what we're talking about, basically, from actually usable. Part of that, because the ditch actually goes next to that, too, so, uh, I can't think of it being more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Won't he have to put retention on the north side of the road anyway?
Not if we, not if we do that on the, in the, what the pond is, because it's a big enough ditch that comes down through there to feed into that. So that would actually.
I have no real objection to it, I'm just trying to get the details in mind, okay?
Actually, it'll give, as Phil said, it'd be a built lot, developed, then a lot, it'd give us in the long run more tax dollars.
Yeah, and we're not gonna use.
Versus mowing, 'cause that's the place that all you do is mow.
Well, now you can do anything.
Right.
I think, I think pond idea is a great idea. Um, and that doesn't happen very often, but when the water comes out of that, out of that ditch.
Need some retention.
Yeah, and then if that serves to help that problem.
It's gonna slow it down a lot, because we got, we can ditch into that pond first before it flows out of it, so to speak, type of situation, that's my vision for that anyway, what happens with that. Plus the fact that, you know, obviously, when we built it, you know, as far as the senior center, we could put a fountain out there, we could make it look nice, we can basically take over the road coming into the back of the hospital there, and actually take it as a street, which is, shouldn't be, but it's not, right now, it's just, it's just an alley because of, it's our road of some sort. It's private property, yeah, so now, if we do that, we got access to get into that area without having to cut another road, and that type of thing. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you all.
No objection by me.
No objection by me.
So do we need a motion to do that?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, we, we gotta do some more, groundwork into whether what the, that property values are, I don't know how much, how many acres that is, or what.
It's, it's, the property that he wants is gonna be, like I said, it's about three to four tenths of an acre.
Does it have to be surveyed often?
Well, he would have to have a survey, to, to give the property ownership back, the, uh, the area that's, that's.
I mean, if you feel comfortable that the exchange is, uh, under, uh, twenty-five thousand.
I think, to be honest, could we, we get the benefit of the, of the better side of that, personally. As far as the, for the property value and what we would then have, like, next to the.
I'd have to bring a resolution back to you, you'd have to.
Okay, I just, I just brought it up because he asked me about it, so.
Meantime, you have to maybe look at it.
Yeah, other than that, I've got nothing else. Motion to adjourn, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a roll call for that, Tom?
Yeah.